Good evening. Welcome to Leiria City Council Meeting for Tuesday, September 2nd, At this time, we'll take a moment of reflective silence by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I would ask Ms. Colette Van Warmer to please come up and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Van Warmer. Ms. Clerk, can I have roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Callahan, Mr. Sira.
Here.
Mr. Armstrong.
Here.
Mr. Oswald.
Here.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Tolett.
Here.
Mr. Lippian.
Mrs. Sawerka.
Here.
Mrs. Davis.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Stewart.
Here.
We have two absent, Mr. Callahan and Mr. Lippian. I do have some excuses.
Did I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved in second. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Public hearings?
We have one. You are hereby notified that a public hearing will be held Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, at 7:00 PM to consider the following. An ordinance demanding section 1131.02 codified ordinances of the city of Leiria, Ohio, known as zoning ordinance to rezone certain real property located at 131 Williams Street, Leiria, Ohio, from a R-TH residential two household district and a H-I heavy industrial district to a L-I light industrial district.
Are there any proponents? Are there any proponents? Please state, welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Tiffany Reedy, 113 Williams Street. Good evening. I didn't think I'd be back here for this one, so I'm kind of excited. I just came in to tell you guys that since he's been there, the place has started to look so much better. There's paint on it. There's a light that's working that hasn't worked since it was closed in November of 2019. We no longer have criminal types hanging out in the building trying to glean every scrap of copper out of it and then hang out later. It's been really nice, and he's a respectful business owner. He works very well with the neighborhood, unlike his predecessor. So I just think that he's a good fit, and most of the neighbors that I've spoken to, there's 11 houses, but I only spoke to eight, and most people are happy to have him. He's offered to help neighbors when they've had things going on, and it's just, it's night and day in comparison to the former. So I would just ask that you would consider, go ahead and give him the zoning that he needs to keep moving. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for coming up. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? I declare this public hearing has been held.
Sponsored by Community Development, an ordinance demanding section 1131.02 codified ordinances of the city of Leiria, Ohio, known as zoning ordinance to rezone certain real property located at 131 Williams Street, Leiria, Ohio, from a R-TH residential two household district and a H-I heavy industrial district to a L-I light industrial district.
Mr. Schneider.
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension rules.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mitchell. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Ordinance 2025-127. That's all the public hearings.
The July 22 strategic planning minutes, the August 4 regular council meeting minutes, and the August 11 special council meeting minutes.
So moved.
Moved in second. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Remarks or reports from city officials. Mayor Brubaker.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Two quick items. One, I want to thank the Cleveland Pops Orchestra for an outstanding event on Saturday evening, the 26th year that they've been in downtown Leiria. The square was packed. It was a chilly night, but I want to thank the orchestra for coming out. Also want to thank Keri Riordan and her staff because the park looked amazing and has been looking amazing all summer. The baskets, I don't know have ever looked that good this late in the year before, but I do want to recommend the Parks and Rec staff for a great event on Saturday evening. And secondly, a couple of months ago, we had Lumos Fiber here who gave us an initial information in regards to their expansion into Lorain County, and we stated then that we'd bring them back on this evening to give us an update. And we have Stephen Kristen here, who is the Director of Market Development for Lumos Fiber, so I would defer, Mr. President, if you're okay, my time to him. Thank you.
Very good. Welcome back. Please state your name and address for the record. We look forward to your presentation.
Steve Kristen, 72 Morningview Circle in Canfield, Ohio. So thank you, Mayor, for inviting me back, and thank you, City Council, for having me here. And thank you for the residents. It's always good to see residents that show up to take an active interest in our communities. This was a very busy week for a lot of people. It was a holiday, right? It was a holiday, Labor Day, and I sat down in preparation last week, and I started tracking some things. So I have a physical coming up, and I need some blood work. So I went online, located a blood lab close by, went online to that blood lab and found the date, made an appointment. I also do work in Florida, made an appointment for a flight online, got a car rental online. Find for the appointment, I checked my navigation system to find out how to get there, had the blood work done. The results came online to me, had to make a change on my rental card, did that online. I bought tickets for the Canfield Fair, bought those online and saved some money. I actually went to the concert, Canfield Fair, last night, again, bought those tickets online, and on and on and on. And the reason I say that is because many of us in this room, what I talked about, whether it's navigation to get here, yes, my mother-in-law grew up in Leiria. I have a general feeling how to get here. I don't know exactly. Do I get off at 57? Do I continue? What about midway mall? Do I make a left or right? But I went online for the navigation, and I say that only because, for the most part, I would say everybody in here can relate to using a computer to have that information readily available to them. So I'm not talking to those folks. What I'm talking about and talking to the people, our constituents here, that do not have access to high-speed internet. The folks are getting left behind, and it's unfortunate for my previous, about 40 years in the industry, Ohio ranks near the bottom third in access to information, and that's really what it is. It's not just playing a game, doing some gaming or checking an email, staying in touch with maybe grandkids or seeing your grandparents are okay, or maybe monitoring your house while you're away, your smart TV. How many people use Netflix? You take all those things that we do on a regular basis, and we can't function. So today, what I want you to do, this week, when you sit there and when you use your smartphone or go online, I want you to pause for a minute and think, how is this computer helping me? And what if I didn't have this? What if I had to call somebody and wait online or wait on the phone to make an appointment for blood work? What if I did know exactly how to get to that quest location? What if I wasn't sure how long it was going to take to get to City Hall here? There are people in our community now that need access that don't have it, and so that's what we're here today talking about. Now, one of the things that makes Lumos different, there's three things that I want to mention that make us different. First of all, since we last met in June, a couple of things have happened. One is we made a formal announcement that we're coming into Lorain County. We've been meeting with the mayor several times prior to that. So we do a lot of communication early on, even before the announcement. We're communicating that. Another illustration of that is I've got George with me, I've got Lou with me, and Doug with me. They handle installation, they handle construction support, and Lou handles our government relations work. So we are all about communication. That's what makes us different. We focus on communications. This will not be the last time I'll be with you. I'll come again and again and again. And it's also, one of the things I want to mention, in addition to communicating, we talk to a lot of the residents. I'm willing to do town hall meetings, but what residents tell us they want is they want high-speed internet, but they also want their yard restored to the way it was before we got there, and we pride ourselves on restoration. The other thing I was going to mention to you, and this is something is, we don't just come in and talk to you, we listen. So Councilwoman Davis and I, afterwards, after the last time, and I would say, I'm going to stick around after this meeting. If anybody wants to talk to me, more than happy to speak, and we stayed, we talked probably 20 minutes, Councilwoman. And at that time, it wasn't official, but in our mind, we were thinking we were going to be about a year out to Leiria. Well, based on a conversation I had with Councilwoman Davis and talking with George and Doug and Lou and some other folks at Lumos, we've now moved that up. I want to be real careful because I don't overcommit, but that year away is now probably six months away. That has to do with, we want to service the people that have the needs. We know Lorain has some internet, but they don't have all of it. There are people that need it, and we want to service them. So things to keep away, to take away from today is, we're here for a long haul. The overall project's probably going to take about three, maybe four years. We're going to need some help. We're going to have to go to you guys and, hey, we need some locate help. One of the things that slows us down is the locates, and what locates are, is going out and identifying where those cables underground are and the wires so we don't hit them when we dig. And if you look at the handout, then this is still has passed out. There's some information about that. You talk about communication, what that is, that is a copy of the form that we send out to the residents. So you may remember, the last time we talked, there was different communications that we do. We have an email that can go out. We have a direct mail piece that goes out. We have door hangers that go out. We have sandwich boards that go out, and this is a new piece here, and it talks to the residents. So they're going to say, when I say locate, you might say, what does that mean? Does anybody here know what locates mean? Okay, we got one person, two people. What does it mean?
Locating all of their utilities.
Exactly, and why is that important?
So they're not hit.
So they're not hit, and they're different colors, indicating water, gas, electric, and it's very important because what we're finding out, that we have to make sure we know where they are, that we go and build around them, but it's also important for the residents to know, hey, this guy put a flag in my yard. What's that about? Or this woman put this blue flag. What does blue mean versus orange? And so we took that and we actually put that color code on this handout. Anyhow, that's really all I wanted. To come here, thank you again, Mayor, and thank you, council people, for allowing me to come talk. I did allow some time here if we want. I can do some questions. We've got, I take the easy questions. I think I mentioned that before. I take the easy ones. The hard questions are these gentlemen back here, but we can take some questions if you have, and we also stick around.
I do have a couple of questions in regards to the location. Don't we contract out through, can you call the, oops, Ohio Utilities public to go out and mark, do the markings, and don't we hire a GPS company to come in and locate utilities? Outsource without any engineering? Don't they, with all the infrastructure in the past, haven't we located those utilities? Like an outside GPS company to come and do that? This is for conversation to help Lumos locate those, what we don't have or record of.
In regards to city utilities, the engineering department locates the water, sewer, storm, all within the right of way, anything that we manage, and then, yes, the gas, electric, phone, they're contracted out through third parties typically.
Right, but we do have the, we have the capability of outsourcing GPS companies to come in and locate utilities.
We do GPS all our stuff as we come across it nowadays, so, yes, we've been doing it for a number of years now.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? All right, very good. Thank you. We look forward to hearing back from you.
Okay, thank you very much for having me.
Mr. Oswald, is it regards to something else for the mayor?
Something else.
Okay.
I just want to say to the administration, the mayor, you know, we as council people get calls all the time, every week, and there are always complaints, or this is going on, or why aren't you fixing this? Why aren't you doing that? And that's hard to swallow all the time, but we do, and we take care of their problems. And I keep trying to tell these people, just like you put in one of your notes on all these projects that we're doing, and I'm like, everybody likes to focus on those little things, you know, the street needs this, or that tree has to come down, you know, but all them houses that we're building, all these senior facilities that we're doing, you know, it's just, it's enormous amount of work that we're doing every day. How many times do you get a call out on a water main break? Almost consistent, and yeah, well, you guys run out there and do it, but nobody says, oh, thanks for fixing our water main. We have water again. And you know what? We got to start focusing on the good stuff that you're doing, and we're making progress. Sometimes it takes time, you know, and we could say the buildings that are taking time, we know that, but I think we're heading in the right direction, and I think we got a lot to be proud of so far, and we're just early into this. And so I just want to say that you guys, you know, everybody needs a little pat on the back every once in a while, and it is appreciated. And when they tell me that, you know, I got this problem, I says, do you remember that road we just put in for you? Or you had that issue? Remember? Well, yeah, and you know that house that we were working on, Washington Avenue, for five years, and now it's looking beautiful? Well, yeah, well, that took five years, but look at it now. So things do happen for the good, and it's hard because they take your heart out sometimes, you know, because you want to do a good job for them, so I just wanted to say thank you. That was it.
All right, very good. Thank you. Safety Service Director Ponowski.
Thank you. Through you. I don't have a report this evening, but I would like to invite Scott Nalitz, who's our new water pumping superintendent to the microphone, just to give a brief introduction of himself to council, as you will, from time to time, need to talk with him and share a little bit of his background with you.
Very good. Please state your name and address for the rec, well, not for the record, but please your name, sorry. Habit.
Scott Nalitz, 369 Crestway Oval in the city of Brunswick. Had the opportunity to meet with Chris and many other with the city of Leiria about a month ago or so, and two weeks ago started as a superintendent of the water plant. I have 33 years in the water industry. You know, we just listened to how technology has kicked in, and, you know, we use our phones and computers for everything, but it hasn't, that has definitely changed the water industry. A lot of the technology that we deal with, constant changes with the Ohio EPA. I've seen it over the 33 years I've been with Cleveland. Started in with the engineering department back in 1992. After a few years with the engineering department, went out in the, with the streets department, working with outside contractors and doing locating of underground utilities, you know, just to protect everything within Cleveland's system. Decided to move, I took the EPA test to get my water treatment license, worked through the whole process, all three steps in the license system with the Ohio EPA, and then took on a manager role with the city of Cleveland, where I started working on my Class 4 back in April of '21. I completed the Class 4 process. I currently hold the Class 4 water treatment license. That was a heck of a process to go through. So it's definitely an enjoyable position. It's an enjoyable industry. Every day when you come into work, there's something different. You know, it's always something different. You never know what you're going to walk into. Would you have a lot of projects going on, just you know, trying to move forward and keep up with the times, keep up with the changes by the Ohio EPA? Brings back some of the engineering and the experience I had when I first started with Cleveland, brings up some of the architectural experience I had. Originally, that's what I went to school for, was wanting to be an architect. Then I found the water industry and gave up on that, so.
Very good. Does anybody have any questions? Ms. Sawerka?
Thank you. Welcome. Sounds like you have all the right experience, both in a collective bargaining environment and in a water plant itself. Any update or any feeling on the fluoride issue in Ohio? Has there been anything sort of filtering on that?
So I'm currently the sitting chair with the Ohio chapter of the AWWA, and discussions that we've had through AWWA and with Ohio EPA, Ohio EPA is going to follow the lead with, from the federal government. You know, so Ohio EPA, there's currently a bill that was introduced out of Struthers, Ohio, to stop feeding fluoride, and the Ohio EPA, from word that we got is that they are not going to move on it until other states begin to.
Very good. Welcome. Look forward to working with you in the upcoming months and years to come, so. And then obviously, if the council members have your email and everything like that, if there's any questions or further information they would like to get from you, they'll have an outreach to you.
All right, thank you.
Good luck to you. Anything other, Safety Service Director, Mr. Armstrong?
Through you, Director. Do we have any updates on 1415 Middle Ave property?
Yes, thank you. Through you, Chair. Actually, that property was referred to me by the Building Department on a list of properties for potential demolition, so we're looking for funding. So we have seven total properties we're looking to demolish. That's probably going to be after the first of the year, just from a funding perspective, but they've gone through the condemnation process. That's where it stands. If we can do any additional ones due to funding, then we might be able to move that up, but we have three that are more priority. The one that was on our sales, it was a fire, and another one that was emergency situation. It was hit by a car, and then, so we have three that are in front of that one.
What about 115 Tannery and 216 Wolf Court?
115 Tannery, the city took title to that property through the foreclosure process, and the land bank is going to take that down for us and pay for that. I spoke with their coordinator a week, maybe two ago, and she's saying, what they usually do is they get a number of houses all at once and then go through the bid process with contractors, so they're going through that process now. I would anticipate we should have a date certain, maybe by the end of this month. They have to do asbestos abatement and all the other stuff. Wolf Court, I'm not as familiar with. I'd have to look into that one and get back to you on that one.
Thank you.
Safety Service Director, I was just inquiring about the sanitation department. It's my understanding it's going out for bid tomorrow?
Yes, the bid opening is tomorrow, so tomorrow afternoon, we had a total of, I want to say, five entities reach out and request a bid packet. I anticipate responses probably from three. That's who showed up at the pre-bid meeting and continued to engage in conversation. The other ones were from out of state, and I'm not, one was, wanted to sell those trashcans, so once they realized that wasn't what it was about, they kind of opted out. So yes, tomorrow's the bid opening. We are waiting on the report, what I've called the financial study from Re &amp; Associates. They've told us they should have a draft to us this week. We've answered all the questions and provided all the information they requested in our call week before last, so I anticipate having a draft of the study, a first draft this week, is what they've told me. And then the route study, which we are engaged in as well. We have two options on the table right now, and ultimately, the biggest decision is how many people might have to change their pickup day. And so if we're looking to maximize and work efficiently, it might cause a greater, but it would be a one-time, hey, yours, day goes from Tuesday to Wednesday, for instance, but the net result right now could result in us reducing our number of routes on Tuesday and Wednesday, so it would have a positive effect as far as less trucks and so forth on the road, and so that's what we're looking for. We're wrapping most of those things up, and we'll start having some information to bring to council for further discussion.
So when, how long do you think that's all going to take? I mean, we would already know what it takes for a city to, you know, run the operation of the sanitation department, but how long do you think this is going to take for, to gather the report and digest all that? I mean, if one of these bidders comes in and says that I can do it for $7 cheaper than what the city of Leiria is doing, what is the, what is the action then?
Well, I think you need to take a look at it more than just what the numbers are. I think you need to look at the level of services being provided and the decision to get out of the sanitation business. Once we do, we're never going to get back in because you're not going to make that capital expenditure to buy all the trucks and hire all the employees. So I think there's a lot, it's a lot more than just what is the cost here versus what is the cost there, and I think the purpose of the financial study is, as well as the route reorganization study, was to try and find efficiencies in our current process that we're not maximizing because we haven't reorganized our routes in 15 years, and we haven't looked at the financial since 2019. So I think we have to look at all the things together and say, what, how are we doing it now, and how can we do it better, versus what would they charge us to do it, and what would the process look like to get out of the business? So that's the, that's the analysis that I envision.
I would agree to a point, but in looking at what it would cost us for continuous purchasing of trucks, capital, you know, personnel with benefits and wages, I mean, that all has to go into account as far as your decision-making over and through there. I just think that, you know, this was, the report was asked nine months ago, and to start the process, and here we are. You know, it looks like there's still going to be another couple of months before we get any action on it. Seems like. So it's going to be almost a year since I've asked for it. Thank you. Is there any other, anybody else have any questions for the Safety Service? Mayor?
Thank you. Through you. Could we, in maybe next meeting, get an update on how the budget and the numbers are running with life care and where the status of the EMS study is? Mr. Oswald, thank you.
For the Safety Service Director? Thank you. Finance Director Pluski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick update on the general fund cash balance. So August was our second of two, three payday months. As you know, when you're on the bi-weekly pay schedule, we typically have 10 months with two paydays and two months with three paydays, so August was our second three payday month. As a result, cash in the general fund is down 1.7 million from where we started 2025. We started at 15.3 million. We're down to 13.6 million. The good news is that income tax revenues are up 7.5% through August as compared to the same time period last year, so if income tax revenues would have been flat this year, we would probably be down $3 million in cash, so a little bit of good news, a little bit of bad news, so.
Any questions for the Finance Director? Ms. Sawerka?
Thank you. Through you. Are there generally more expenses in certain areas, you know, for example, utility costs or fuel costs that are different than they have been in previous years?
Through you, Mr. President. No, I think it's mainly payroll. Payroll's grown to the point where revenues aren't keeping up, keeping pace.
Any other questions for the Finance Director? Thank you. Butter to Derry.
Thank you. Good evening. Through you, Mr. President. The resolution that was passed at the last meeting concerning the objection to the Bistro liquor license has been submitted along with the required law director's statement in support that, as I previously mentioned, had to be postmarked by today, so I can't give an estimated date of when the response will be or when the hearing date will be set, but I want to thank Chief Walsh and his people, and Chief Fornesti and his people, also Mark also Mark Adams at Lorraine County Public Health, because all of them were very helpful in getting me data and documentation and assuring that when that hearing date is set, that they will be there as needed. So I will keep you posted on that. Also, on the agenda, item 19 under miscellaneous and unfinished business, it's an ordinance which was served with the rest of the legislation in your packets. It's an ordinance, seeking to amend, an ordinance that was passed earlier this summer. It's related to the pace of financing for Forge 417. Essentially, it's to update the exhibit to that legislation. Upon further review on the part of the lender, there was some recalculations done. The burden upon the city is, does not change. But for purposes of them closing on that financing, they need to have, obviously, the figures be accurate and the legislation reflect that. So it is being requested that council consider that tonight on suspension and emergency.
Thank you, Law Director. Any other questions for the Law Director? Mr. Werke?
Thank you. Through you. Any, the landscape over by the mall where the new hotel's going up looks fantastic. The other hotels look great. Any update on the Days Inn, AKA Holiday Inn?
Through you, Mr. President. The receiver, who was appointed by the County Common Pleas Judge, has filed a motion for instruction with the court based upon some of the actions of the property owner's attorney. And actually, just this past Friday, the attorney on behalf of the property owner for the hotel has filed a motion to stay the appointment of the receivership, which is interesting, to say the least, due to the fact that the receiver's been appointed now for several months. And also, the attorney has filed an appeal. It's, obviously, one can never know what someone else is thinking. But in this case, it really, it's really hard to know, because the receiver has put some options together. And I'm not at liberty to say what those are. But basically, to remediate that property, has shared those with the property owner, et cetera. And I believe that the Common Pleas Court will set a hearing, although that date's not been set yet, but will in due course, and we will get some clarity. One of the things that the property owner has asked for is for the property to be listed on the National Registry of Historic Places. And the receiver has, the receiver has indicated his objections to the state. And that is actually set at the board meeting for that organization is actually September 19th. Public input is permitted. And my office, through the receiver, has indicated the city's opposition to that for a variety of reasons, so. And it's also my understanding that the Lorraine County Port Authority has sent a letter in objection as well, so. I wish I had more finite and news for you, but I could tell you that it is, it is continuing. And we continue to try to reach a resolution and put this thing to bed once and for all.
Very good. Any other questions for the Law Director? I did have one. In regards to item 19, even though it's an amendment, is there anything with a special committee report or adding to that committee report? Because it's, with the financing of that, is that?
Through you, Mr. President. No, it is without benefit of a committee report. Was contacted by Assistant Director Calvert at the beginning of last week. And also attorneys for the financing authority. And also Ms. Mercado on behalf of Forge 417.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Just wanted to get clarification on that.
Thank you.
Lary Police Department, Chief Welsh. Any questions for the chief? Thank you, Chief. Lary Fire Department, Chief Pernesti. Any questions for the chief? Very good. Let's go down the line over and through. City Engineer, Mr. Schneider.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not a lot to report, but we do have a few projects going on right now. Today, they milled West River Road north between Five Points and 57. They should be doing the intermediate and resurfacing as far as the asphalt portion. The next day or two, all obviously weather-dependent. Tomorrow, the contractor, same contractor plans to mill Murray Ridge Road south down by the Lorraine County Jail. So that should start early tomorrow. Same thing, full-depth repair should be shortly behind that, as well as the asphalt resurfacing. East River Road was, that Ohio Public Works project has been completed as far as the asphalt work. I believe they have a few extra items to take care of as far as adjustments to grades, maybe some handicap rampings of that nature. But largely, that project is complete. The Gulf Road Water Main Project, the Water Main itself is in. The contractor has tested and purified the main and is currently working on the services. We're anticipating a couple more weeks to complete that. And then they'll put a concrete cap on top of that. And the next contractor will be in to resurface that road. So the street resurfacing, we did bid that out as well. We're currently in the contract phase, getting all the signatures. So it has been awarded. Contractor who has that is eager to get started on that, so he will be right behind it. He's the same one that will be doing Murray Ridge, as well as the West River Road and Gulf Road projects. So they are all eager to get it done.
Good. Any questions for Engineer Schneider, Mr. Oswald, then, Mr. Werke?
Through you, Mr. President. Mr. Snyder, are you allowed to give us an update on what's going on with Overbrook? When will that be finished and restorated from the work that they finalized through there?
I know they're finalizing the punch list as far as the sewer portion. The resurfacing will be behind it with the street resurfacing. So they, I believe, the majority of the sewer work has been completed. They had to go back and, they had an issue with one of the lines. They had to relay some sewer over there.
Oh, thank you. So do you think the plans are, because part of that was, the pavement was for the restoration, the other part was coming out of my money. So are they planning on doing that all at one time? Do you know, or don't you really have that update?
The, I believe there's a small portion of the resurfacing to be done as part of the sewer contract. And then the rest of it will take care of under the other contract. Unfortunately, the way we bid it, it wasn't as easy to split out as you would think sometimes.
Is it two separate companies?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Mr. Werke?
Through you, Ms. Davis.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Davis, then, Mr. Werke, I'm sorry.
Oh, through you, Mr. President. Louisiana, I keep getting calls, is, that's a big project. So is they, I know they just did some work over there, and they did the concrete. And it seemed to be all done. So are they ready to resurface that area?
I believe all the water surface patches have been completed. Mr. Roth Gary is shaking his head over there, so that portion is taken care of. And then the resurfacing will be coming behind it, I would say, in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Werke?
Thank you. Through you. East River between University and the corporate limits was supposed to be done August, like 18th or 19th, something like that. Jason had sent out a notice, and then it didn't happen. Do you know when that portion will get resurfaced?
I believe the portion he sent out was the portion in front of the ER that was just completed, not that portion. So that portion is part of the street resurfacing overall project list, so.
So it'll be done later on in the year?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you. So I'm semi-happy because Murray Ridge, a little piece of Murray Ridge is getting done. But Mr. Snyder, did the bids come in lower than expected, or?
On Murray Ridge?
Or just in general?
I would say, well, for the, you're talking to street resurfacing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. They did come in a little bit lower, so we will be doing the majority of the alternates. Not all of them, I believe, but majority of them.
Well, Mr. President, through you, will we be able to have a few alternates done?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Any other questions for Engineer Schneider? All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Planner, Mr. Shodig. Superintendent Wastewater, Mr. Stewart. Anybody have any questions for either of those? Senior Water Distribution Manager, Mr. Roth Gary. Public Work Supervisor, Ms. Connor. I think they're here for another reason. I think that's everybody. Excuse me. Presidents' referrals and remonstrances. Item number one, community development. Item number two, community development finance. Item number three, community development finance. Item number four, community development finance. Item number five, community development finance. Item number six, finance. Item number seven, finance. Item number eight, finance. Item number nine, utilities. Items 10 through 12 received and placed on file in the clerk's office.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Through you, item number nine, we are going to take off of the referral for, as of right now, for right now.
Very good. So remove that. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Petitions and remonstrances from the lobby? We have some. Dominic Caprera, 2704, is it Grockfield Place? Is it Garfield? I'm sorry, I can't read the writing. I apologize. Subject is traffic violations in Hamilton Elementary, speeders. Very good. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for being a chance to speak.
Yeah, please.
Mostly, I wanna talk about, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Dominic Carrion, 2704 Greenfield Place. I'm from Lorraine, Ohio. I work in the City of Elyria. I'm in charge of the crossing guards for the school. I work for Wicar Security. I'm Chief of Staff. And I work, my concern is, I've been talking to Councilman Ostran, if I pronounced your name. And I'm having a lot of issue. I need help from the chief. Safety for the kids in school. I've been doing this almost for crossing guard for Lorraine, I mean, Elyria, almost for 10, 11 years. And I've been seeing a lot of things going on for the safety of the kids. And we're always talking about safety, 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 but nothing is going on. So I'm glad you guys gave me a chance to speak and say what I'm saying. Nothing against the police department. I mean, I respect them. You know, I got, oh, I got 28 years in the Lorraine County Sheriff Department, a salary deputy sheriff. So I know what's going on. My issue is, at Hamilton School on 13th Street, Middle on 13th, that's a four-way lane there. Most of the time, we got crossing guards who do not wanna work that corner. When they are crossing a child across that street, and they push the caution lights on, traffic don't wanna stop. They go flying to there. Councilman Ostran, being there with me a couple of times, there's cars going like 29, 30 miles per hour. They will not stop with cars. Almost got hit a couple of times from vehicle. Today, at Hamilton School, we almost had a kid get hit today, because the kids, they run into the street. My question is, I know Elyria PD been doing a good job at Ely School, Goffin, Ohio, because I worked that corner there. The first week of school was a Friday, they stopped 10 cars for speeding. The following Monday, I was there again, they stopped another 10 cars. I talked to the police officer, they were wearing blue t-shirt, and I told him, "Thank you for being there." What I'd like to know is, if we could get the same kinda help at Hamilton School, because there's no red lights over there, kids are crossing, and they don't pay attention, they wanna run the street. Sometime, we have a police car parked there, traffic will slow down. But I want them to be there more often for the kids' safety. We're talking about kids' safety. And one of these days, one of them kids gonna get hit. Several times today, we almost had a kid, almost kid got hit. I had to grab him and pull him out of the way, and I got mad. If that guy get out of the car, I think something would happen. But we need safety for the kids, for the school. Law enforcement, you know, if they get a chance to be around there. Hamilton School, we changed the hours because of safety reasons of kids. Now they start 9, no, 8:25 in the morning to 9:25 and a half. They get down one hour. In the afternoon, we change it from 3 o'clock to 2:45 to 3:45. If we could have a law enforcement around there, maybe for 15 minutes, with the kids at kindergarten high school at Hamilton, they get out at 10 after, 10 after 3, they get out, maybe these people will stop. We got issue in Middle on Ford. Middle on Ford is bad. Cars don't want, they wanna make a left turn. Crossing guards crossing the kids, they wanna go right in front of the guards. So if we get law enforcement more visible around there, that will help us out.
What I would ask you to do is, right here.
Go ahead.
What I would ask you to do is maybe meet with Chief Welsh. You guys can coordinate along with the Safety Service Director's office, so you can all be coordinating over and through there for some of the areas that you're speaking to right now. And then if the chief knows of any others, or any other council member knows of that. Councilman Armstrong?
Through you, President. I do wanna echo what Mr. Carrion is saying. But I will say that 2/3 of the traffic unit has been out recently. But we do need more enforcement over there, because it is highly disrespectful to the parents and the children in that area. And honestly, I had a parent tell me that she don't care about that law. So I care about that law. So I am definitely requesting more presence at Hamilton Elementary. Because this, I've been working on this issue since 2023 before I got in office with Mrs. Trammell. And it just, something's gotta give before, like you said, somebody gets hurt.
So I would recommend, you know, meet with the chief and the Safety Service Director. They can kinda coordinate on a meeting time and to discuss the issues that you're seeing here, not that you're describing them, but ways to, you know, kind of counteract that.
I appreciate you guys gave me a chance to talk. I appreciate it. That was a big help. I hope something don't happen to the kids. I'm a Vietnam veteran from Vietnam. I'm an old guy. I'm 76 years old. And I don't want these kids to get hurt. And I'm too old to handle any argument.
Well, we appreciate what you do. We thank you for your service.
Okay, thank you, guys. Thank you for your time. Councilman Ostran, I appreciate all your help you do. Hope to see you more often.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
James McGlamry, 115 Briar Lake Drive. Subject is children playing in the street, item 18 on the agenda tonight. Very good. Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record. And we do have a three-minute comment, you know, for you to, you know, speak.
Thank you. My name is.
To be mindful of that, please. Thank you.
James McGlamry. I live at 115 Briar Lake Drive in Elyria. About a month ago, I addressed a committee of counsel concerning safety on the cul-de-sac where children were playing late at night, sometimes 10 or 12 in the street at the same time. Since that time, the number of children has diminished, sometimes 2 to 4 children, some nights, not at all. So the amount of disturbance has gone down, and the number of children has gone down. Still, for children playing in the street... Still, for children playing in the street, sometimes very young children, it is not safe. So, before the council tonight, there is an ordinance to retract a 1954, 55 motion on playing games in the street. I, I would encourage council that if that is rescinded, that there be some kind of ordinance put in place to protect our children, to forbid the playing in the street by, 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 by young people. So, I have 47 years of service in the public schools of Lorraine County, mostly. In Bay Village as Principal of Normandy School, in Wellington as Superintendent of Schools, and in Upper Sandusky as Superintendent of Schools. So, I know about children and safety, and I would encourage that as we look down the road, that we consider the safety of the children when we're looking at playing in the streets. Thank you for this opportunity.
Very good. Thank you for coming up. John Gaul, 424 Augusta Drive. Uh, subject is parking signs at 424 Augusta. Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, I'm John Gaul. I'm at 424 Augusta Drive, Third Ward. Good evening, Mayor Brubaker, council members and city staff. My, uh, I, I'm in the Third Ward. I've been told by Building Department, my corner lot that I have there is considered two front yards. I could throw a baseball into Carlisle Township from where I live. And, uh, thank you for having me here tonight to speak about this issue. Let me start with this. This is a post-it note, and you're all familiar with them, small, simple, easy to use, leave quick reminders. Years ago, 3M ran a commercial with the line, "You won't go nuts looking for nuts." The idea was simple. Post-it notes help you stay organized, avoid confusion, and keep things running smoothly. But today, I, I'm here to talk about something that's become anything but smooth. It's the placement of no parking signs along the entire curb of my property. This began in July, when I noticed white flags, we talked flags earlier, near two manhole covers 177 feet apart. A few days later, square perforated steel tubing, the standard post for signage, was placed with about one and a half foot exposed above the ground. The next day, a no parking sign was installed right on my property line with 450 Augusta Drive within 10 feet of my driveway. In essence, my two front yards had no parking. That led to a series of calls to Jason Haas, Jay Loesch, and, uh, and to Councilwoman Mary Swerka. While we were waiting for a response, I followed up with an email that included Mayor Brubaker. Soon afterward, a meeting was held at my house to discuss the issue. They showed up, uh, with the exception of Mayor Brubaker, and I had a neighbor there also. Visibility was the main focus of the 424 Augusta Drive meeting. The result was a clear agreement. The signs would be removed. I would rescind my public records request. The matter could be revisited, but only if necessary. At that point, everything made sense. It was organized, practical, thoughtful, because you won't go nuts looking for nuts. But here's what I learned during that time. The original action came from a phone call to the Safety Service Department, from someone who doesn't live in the neighborhood, asking, "Why aren't there no parking signs over there?" Our traffic engineer then consulted a manual, the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the MUTDC, that changes every so often, effectively shifting the goalposts with every new addition. It's a manual suggestions, not absolutes. For Councilwoman Swerka, 15 total signs were placed in the neighborhood that one day. Neighbor, rather, residents were in the dark with no communication by the city prior to placement. While having discussions with two former council members, it was brought to my attention that wholesale change like this would not happen in a water precinct, but a petition would have to be presented before moving forward.
Mr. Gaul, your three minutes are up.
Oh, thank you.
I could make a motion to, if someone wants to continue on with for another two minutes. Moved in second, it all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed nay. Two more minutes, Mr. Gaul.
Okay, thank you, council. At our meeting, it was confirmed that visibility, visibility on my property was not obstructed. Augusta Drive is 31 feet between curbs. Those are just some of the things I found out during that time. Then, just one week ago, I got a call from Jay, and he told me, "John, this is being revisited." And I asked why. He said, "Because of a post-it note that was put on his desk." "Yes, a literal post-it note, again, from outside Augusta Drive. Was it because of too much parking?" I asked. So, now we're preparing to spend city funds for another study for the installation of the same unnecessary signs that were placed, then removed. Let me be clear, I'm speaking for only my property at 424. Now, I have known my neighbors, uh, they have curb parking also. We had 16, 15 cars parked for my 25th anniversary celebration at my house one day. But what's changed for causes? Accidents, spike in traffic, new construction, new store, school? No. I mowed my lawn the other day, it took one hour, and during that time, one car drove by. Four bicycles passed. Three neighbors came home. Nothing has changed in six years. That's what happens. All I'm asking for, that this makes sense. Let's make the decisions based on evidence. Let's make it based on need and community input, not busybodies with nothing better to do, or manuals that create revisions to sell more subscriptions. Let's stay organized, practical, thoughtful. Let's avoid confusion. Let's not raid the treasury for more, for no reason, because honestly, because it's not good to go nuts looking for nuts. Thank you, council.
Mr. Gaul.
Any questions?
So, just my understanding that it's just being revisited? Is that correct? Is that, are we still looking into that?
Yes, through you, Mr. President. Uh, we've had some residents in the area who have asked for no parking because they believe there are some blind spots around the curbs. We have some residents in the area that don't believe that no parking is, uh, necessary. And so, we are reviewing it to consider all things. Um, and some people saw the initial signs put up, so when they were taken down, they did reach out because they were proponents for them. So, we're reviewing that and looking at the necessity, uh, before moving forward. So, that's where it currently stands.
Very good. That's all the petitions from the lobby?
Thank you, Mr. Gaul.
That's all the petitions from the lobby? All right. Petitions and remonstrances from council members? We have one. Mr. Tolet, utility rates?
Deb, can you stand next to me in case I make a mistake? You don't have to speak, I promise. I'm going to give a quick recap of why I wanted to speak tonight. And someone started an online petition, and it had to do with water and sewer rates. And then, some of the things that, claims that were made about Elyria has terrible water, a lot of horrible things that I knew weren't true. And so, there was a couple emails sent to council members, but only one had a phone number. And I called that person to get this story. And after getting the story, I worked with the Water Department, and we found out that the usage at that home was equal from midnight to 7:00 AM, when no one was awake, or no one was home, as it was the rest of the day. And because of that, that would affect the water rate and the sewer rate, because your sewer rate is based on your water. So, I explained this to the tenant, because it was not a homeowner, it was a renter. And she said, "Well, what do you expect me to do? My landlord lives in Texas." And, you know, that's not our business. So, um, I dug in a little bit as well on the history of our water system. And it was pretty fascinating. Water came to Elyria in the 1850s. The tank on Mussey Avenue was a holding tank for water that we extracted and gave to residents from the Black River. And that happened until about 1900. There's 70 or 80 deaths from all the sicknesses that happened. And then, Elyria bought land in Lorraine on the lake. And over the years, there have been three water lines run, the 8.3 miles from Lorraine to Elyria. In Lorraine, the water is processed, taken in through three ducts, processed, and please correct me if I'm wrong with that, uh, processed. It is tested every hour, on the hour, 365 days of the year. Then those readings are sent to the EPA. And so, when I heard this thing about, "We're getting bad water, we're getting bad water," I thought to myself, "Let me call Joe Pernesty." Joe Pernesty would know. Because one of the things that was happening, and it happened at my house, was yellow water came out of my spigot for 30 seconds, then it went away. My wife said, "Hey, they must have did the fire hydrants." What I found out is, this year, Dave Rothgeri and his team did maybe more fire hydrants than we've ever done this summer. Is that a fair statement, Dave? Yeah, just cranking. It wasn't the fire department doing it, it was water pumping doing it. And we did so, every home in Elyria at some point would have had 30 to 45 seconds of discolored water. So, in my head, I've cleared up bad water, and I believe some of the sewer things that have come to light. One of the things that Elyria also did, and we completed this about four years ago, was we installed new meters on every single home in Elyria. And those meters take a reading every 10 minutes, again, 365 days of the year. So, if you have a spike in your water bill, like we did at this person's house, that went five units, five units, five units, 10 to 16 for six straight months, we know that there's a leak in their home. And it could be a hidden leak. It could be in a wall, but it's always after the meter. So, I've learned more about water than I care. So, but we voted on this as a council to increase the water rates. It's because that the majority of our lines coming to the city of Elyria are original lines. Some are 70, 80 years old. Our water, though, right now is so good and so inexpensive, other communities are buying water from us. Just so everyone's aware, our water is so good and so inexpensive. When you get your utility bill, of which the water is part of it, when you see one unit, or two units, or 10 units, each unit is 750 gallons. If you break that out of what the cost is per unit, you're down to about a penny for some of the best water that there is per gallon.
Mr. Tolet?
Go ahead.
It's okay. I just, following in order with council rules, it's, you've extended your three minutes. I'll make a motion to give you another couple minutes.
Take a vote, I'm sorry. No, I, I wanted to address this. Thank you.
Do you need to do a vote? Okay.
I would, I, I would think formality-wise, we probably should. We'll give Mr. Tolet three more minutes, and that'll, can I get a motion? Moved and, moved and, is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
So, we took a vote as council, and we raised our water rates from .83, .0083 cents a unit to just under, up, just under a penny per gallon. It's still some of the cheapest water that there is in Ohio. We had to do it to repair those lines that run from the city of Elyria to the city of Lorraine. It's actually backwards from that. And I wanted people to know why. We don't want to jeopardize the quality of water that our citizens have. And thank you very much, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Tolet. We appreciate you, you know, adding, um, for the information that you're providing over and through there. So, I, I would say that, um, you know, anybody who's got any issues through the water or their sewer bills, questions, I would make an, call the administration. There's going to be a point person through the Safety Service Director's Office, or where that is, and they would direct you to the appropriate department so that you can inquire about any questions you have in regards to your rate, your sewer bill, and that, because, you know, everyone's situation is unique to itself. So, from that standpoint, that's the kind of direction we'll go. Mr. Oswald, if you want to make a quick comment on that?
Through you, Mr. President. So, they didn't just take a number, the administration, a number out of the hat and say, "We're going to raise this." There was a lot of work that went into this. And the other thing, the water that comes from Lorraine to Elyria, the pipeline is so bad that we're losing so much water before we even get it to a resident. So, as soon as we get that line, and that's in the process, get that fixed, we'll be getting more water that won't be making money, so it's going to help. So, we got a game plan, and nobody wants us to raise prices, but it wasn't just drawn out of a hat. Thank you.
Mr. Ostrom, did you have any comment?
Uh, through you, Mr. President. I also want to comment that, um, it's easy to check your indoor water meter, and if it doesn't come on with a simple flashlight, please call the Water Department. Because I had a home that it, it, me and Mrs. Connor, we had a fun time at this home replacing this lady's meter, but she also had a leak. So, I would encourage you to take your flashlight, check your meter, and if there's any issues, contact the Water Department.
True. Mr. Tolet?
Last thing. Uh, we have an outstanding water pumping department. We have an outstanding wastewater treatment facility that takes care of this. There are some things that have been mandated. I didn't get into the sewer issues. But there's been some things that have been mandated by the federal EPA that we don't have a choice on. And that also affects bills as well, that we were told, "This is a federal mandate, you have to do it," which is when you see the big dig in the community going on. That's what that is. And people like Kathy from Engineering did an outstanding job of explaining it to council and the funding and how it works. But thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Ms. Mitchell, final comment?
I was going to speak on the sewer, but Mr. Tolet did that. There was an unfanned, a unfunded mandate from the EPA. They said, "You have to fix this." We said, "Well, we don't have the money." They said, "We don't care." So, that's why your sewer bills are high, because of the unfunded mandate that the EPA said that we must do this. So, there, like Mr. Oswald said, there's a reason for all of it, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the conversation. That's all the petitions from council members? Reports of standing in special committees? There are none. Resolutions, first reading?
Sponsored by Finance. A resolution approving a list submitted by the Safety Service Director for the collection of delinquent inactive utility accounts and directing the clerk of council to certify said accounts to Lorraine County Auditor.
Mr. Tolet?
Mr. President, I ask that this resolution be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Is there any further discussion? Question? On the suspension, all's in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed nay. Motion carried.
Resolution 2025-35. Sponsored by Finance. A resolution approving a list submitted by the Safety Service Director for the collection of final assessments for the replacement of private water service lines, directing the clerk of council to certify said list to the Lorraine County Auditor and declare an emergency.
Mr. Tolet?
Mr. President, I ask that this resolution be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules and declared an emergency.
Second. Second by Mr. Schneider. Is there any further discussion? Question? On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed nay. On the emergency, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed nay. On the pass-
On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carried.
Resolution 2025-36. Sponsored by Finance. A resolution approving a list submitted by the Safety Service Director for the collection of final assessments for the replacement of private water service lines, directing the clerk of... That's the same one though.
It's private sewer.
Okay. All right, we'll start over. Sponsored by Finance. A resolution approving a list submitted by the Safety Service Director for the collection of final assessments for the replacement of private sewer lines, service lines, directing the clerk of council to certify said list to Lorraine County Auditor and declare an emergency.
Mr. Tolet?
Mr. President, I ask that this resolution be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules and declared an emergency.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. On the emergency, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carried.
Resolution 2025-37. Sponsored by Finance. A resolution approving a list submitted by the Safety Service Director for the collection of 2024 delinquent stormwater fees, directing the clerk of council to certify said list to Lorraine County Auditor and declare an emergency.
Mr. Tolet?
Mr. President, I ask that this resolution be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules and declared an emergency.
Second. Second by Mr. Schneider. On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. On the emergency, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carried.
Resolution 2025-38. Sponsored by Finance. A resolution finding that the city has unfit for municipal use certain real property.
Mr. Tolet?
Mr. President, I ask that this resolution be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carried.
Resolution 2025-39. That's all resolutions first reading?
Resolutions second reading?
There are none.
Resolutions third reading?
There are none.
Ordinances first reading?
Sponsored by Finance. An ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director for the city of Elyria to dispose of city property that is unfit for municipal use.
Mr. Tolet?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carried.
Ordinance 2025-128. Sponsored by Finance. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to...
Mr. Clerk, due to apparent conflict of interest, I'm going to recuse myself for the next ordinance reading.
Just this one?
Yes, this.
Okay. Sponsored by Finance. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to reduce the plan review and building permit fees for renovation project for open door Christian schools.
Mr. Tolet?
Madam President, I'm sorry. Yes, I would ask this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second.
On the suspension, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. On the passage, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Ordinance 2025-129. Sponsored by Finance. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a agreement with Tyler Technologies for processing credit card, debit card, and e-check transactions and declare an emergency.
Mr. Tolet?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules and declared an emergency.
Second. Second by Mr. Schneider. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. On the emergency, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carried.
Ordinance 2025-130. Sponsored by Utilities and Finance. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the activated sludge aeration tank improvements project for the wastewater pollution control plant.
Ms. Mitchell?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carried.
Ordinance 2025-131. Sponsored by Utilities and Finance. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperation agreement with Elyria Township to share in the cost resurfacing a portion of Murray Ridge Road, and declare an emergency.
Ms. Mitchell?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules and declared an emergency.
Second.
Second by Mr. Armstrong. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. On the emergency, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carried.
Ordinance 2025-132. Sponsored by Utilities and Finance. An ordinance amending Elyria Codified Ordinances, Chapter 939, Water Rules and Regulations, Elyria Municipal Water Supply System.
Ms. Mitchell?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed on its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second.
Second by Mr. Armstrong. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carried.
Ordinance 2025-133. Sponsored by Utilities and Finance. An ordinance amending Elyria Codified Ordinances, Section 109.12, Elyria Municipal Water Supply Systems.
Ms. Mitchell?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second.
Second by Mr. Armstrong. Is there any further discussion?
I have a question.
Mr. Workup?
Thank you, through you, Mr. President. Are we going to put these on the bills, or somehow send some notice out to our customers?
Through you, Mr. President. This is the update to the fee ordinance. Including the updates are the addition of the habitual delinquency fee, the delinquency fee, the misappointed slash prearranged fee, and the tampering fee.
Through you, Mr. President. I believe that previously, they were on the backs of the bills, but I don't... They're not printed, and people get their bills electronically, so I'm just wondering how we're going to, just as long as there's some idea of getting the information out to people, that these are the new fees that we're charging. That's my... I don't expect an answer right now. I'm making a suggestion. Thank you.
We haven't, through you, we haven't, but I will look into that and see about doing so.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions have been called. On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carried.
Ordinance 2025-134. Sponsored by Finance. An ordinance authorizing the Finance Director to transfer funds to the specified accounts.
Mr. Tolet?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carried.
Ordinance 2025-135. Sponsored by Finance. An ordinance amending ordinance number 2025-37, known as the 2025 Permit Appropriations Ordinance, to change funds in various accounts.
Mr. Tolet?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second. Second by Mr. Schneider. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carried.
Ordinance 2025-136. Sponsored by Community Development and Finance. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a community reinvestment area tax incentive agreement with TWG Development LLC, and declare an emergency.
Mr. Schneider?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules and declared an emergency.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sarah. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. On the emergency, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carried.
Ordinance 2025-137. Sponsored by Community Development Finance. An ordinance approving the application of Kevin Hyatt, agent of Elyria Dental Arts Building, Inc., for improvements at 301 East Avenue, Elyria, Ohio pursuant to the downtown facade improvement program created by ordinance 2019-19.
Mr. Schneider?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sarah. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carried.
Ordinance 2025-138. Sponsored by Utilities. An ordinance repealing Section 311.06 of the Elyria Codified Ordinances, Games and Street.
Ms. Mitchell?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second.
Second by Mr. Armstrong. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions have been called. On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carried.
Ordinance 2025-139. That's all, ordinance's first reading?
Ordinance's second reading?
There are none?
Ordinance's third reading?
There are none.
Committee calls.
Joint CD Finance requests the mayor, law director, finance director, safety service director, and engineer on Monday 9/8, beginning at 6:00 PM. Finance requests the mayor, law director, finance director, safety service director, and engineer on Monday 9/8, immediately file in the joint meeting. Strategic plan, I request the mayor, safety service director, finance director, and law director on Monday 9/15, immediately filing full counsel.
Miss Lanes, unfinished business due to an apparent conflict of interest, so I'm going to step out on this item as well. Ms. Mitchell?
An ordinance amending ordinance 2025-114, loving special assessments for the purpose of paying for and financing the cost of acquiring, constructing, improving, and equipping certain public improvements in the city of Elyria, Ohio in cooperation with Elyria, Elyria Township, Lorraine Energy Improvement District, and declare an emergency.
Mr. Schneider?
Madam President, I ask that this ordinance be passed without the benefit of a committee report under suspension of rules and declared an emergency.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sarah. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. On the emergency, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. On the passage, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Through you, Madam President, just for housekeeping, the emergency has failed due to the fact that there are only eight votes in favor. However, this ordinance has passed, and it will go into effect based upon regular statutory rules.